Are we good? All right. Welcome, everybody. Welcome. Sorry for the couple of minute delay there, slight technical issue. Welcome to the Portsmouth School Committee meeting of Tuesday, August 26th, our first of our new academic year. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for our troops in harm's way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Prior to this public session, we had an executive session. No votes were taken. We do not have this on the agenda to seal the executive session minutes, but we can go ahead and do it, right? Can I have a motion, please, to seal the executive session minutes of Tuesday, August 26th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, 5-0. Please let the record reflect that Ms. Keon and Ms. Kelly are unable to join us tonight. In case of emergency, we've got two exit doors back there, one up here, and we meet over at the district admin building to await further instructions. Just like to say, it was lovely yesterday to have the town council recognize Dr. Kenworthy, give him the town tile. That was a very nice recognition for him as well. And congratulations to Dr. Viveras, our new superintendent, having her first opening ceremony today at the school. I know Mr. Ferber, Ms. McDade, and I were able to be there, and I just felt such positive energy in that building. It was really, it wasn't even the roof tiles falling on the roof, but it was, it was just the positive buzz in the building that was really a lovely thing and a reminder that, you know, kids are the reason we're here. So you did a, did a great job with that. The only other thing on my chairperson's remarks is we have a school, our annual school committee workshop coming up, and the topics I've heard so far that people are interested in discussing are the following, and if there are no other topics that we have suggested tonight, then at our next meeting, Dr. Viveras and I will put together that workshop agenda. So, so far, they include the strategic plan implementation exercise and talking about the strategic plan and school improvement team. So obviously, strategic plan, a big focus. Artificial intelligence was also suggested as a potential topic. It's a role in schools, education, et cetera. Talking about enrollment, several topics fall under that, but kind of as a general topic for discussion. Presentation list for school committee meetings, that's something we usually do, so that if people have certain interests or would like to hear more about a certain program or a certain topic, you can suggest that, and then it would be on an agenda at a future date. One of the topics that was suggested came from a member talking about professional development as something that might be the subject as a, either the workshop or a future meeting. We always talk about the superintendent goals for next year and the evaluation system. Since we have a new superintendent this year, you may have different ways of doing things, and we can work to accommodate that. And then the final comment or suggestion was looking at the wellness committee. Last year, we created, we blended in the climate and culture committee into the wellness, district wellness committee, and there was a suggestion that we look back and see, okay, was that working? How are our subcommittee work, subcommittees working, et cetera? Thoughts, comments, anything else people would like to hear at that? That's a lot for a three-hour meeting. We may need to parse it down to maybe put like one of them, I'm just picking this one off the list, artificial intelligence for its own workshop at a, at a future date, but anything people feel are missing? Okay, so then we'll, we'll work on, oh, and communication, what the school committee wants for communication from the superintendent, excuse me, I forgot that one, I had it down here. So those are the things we'll talk about. All right. That is all for our chairperson's remarks. Moving on to subcommittee updates, District Building Committee met August 20th. The superintendent is going to be talking about the construction updates in her remarks, so I'm not going to repeat anything there. We're also going to be having a presentation on stage one and stage two, so I'm going to leave that for the presentation, so as not to repeat anything. There was a suggestion when the community could see the new bathrooms and at the middle school and celebrate the completed work, and the suggestion was the open houses would be a good time to do that. So for the committee members, I have the regular OPM updates for people to take a look at, if you want, and we'll leave the rest for later in the meeting then. Negotiation Subcommittee met July 21st, and as you see on the business agenda, we have the contract with Council 94 for discussion and action, and that was the final review of that contract. That's all the Subcommittee updates. All right, now the fun part. We get to recognize the Portsmouth High School sailing team, Dr. Viveras.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. Okay, on Saturday, May 17th, Portsmouth High School competed in the state sailing regatta in Newport. Over the course of the day, our sailors completed 10 races in a variety of conditions and performed exceptionally well. At the end of the competition, Portsmouth High School was named the roadie state champion, winning by a strong margin, I've been told. Today, we are so proud to recognize this accomplishment. Dr. Heath will join Dr. Copeland this evening in presenting certificates to our championship team. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Viveras. So at this time, I'm going to read off the names of everybody on the sailing team, any representatives that are here this evening, if you could just come up and receive your certificate, okay? And then just hang out as well, because we'll take a picture right after. Leo Burnham, Elena Sun, Noel Armananzis, Lucas Garday, Ava McDermott, James Hackett, Pia Strulie, Peyton Cordes Staskoog, so... Hunter Shumsky, Larea Loyola, and Matthew DeFalco, along with Coach Scott Pakingham and Kim Hackett, the team administrator.
Is this the first time in Portsmouth history we've won state in sailing? That's what I have to tell. Well, congratulations. Hey, come talk to, come say a couple of words at the mic.
I, I've got nothing prepared, but there is one more that we should have had, our, our friend Owen, who passed last year. We had a fundraiser where the kids dedicated this season to him, and they won the states. They got invited to the O'Day Championship in Connecticut, where I forget their result, but we earned an at-large berth to go to New Jersey for the Phoebe King, which is the consolation race for the national championships. With 18 teams all over the country, they got seventh. So they won a handful of races as well, so they just had a phenomenal season, and we don't want to forget Owen and put him in the mix of it, and extremely talented group of kids and sailors, and they're going wonderful places. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So how many of the sailors are returning this year, and how many graduated?
We graduated four. Three of them are two very high-ranking sailings that they're all unfolding.
Wow, excellent. So you have a strong team coming back.
We do.
Excellent. Well done. Should I, should we give those certificates to Dr. Heath, or I don't know who knows? Okay. Well, thank you so much, you guys do Portsmouth proud. It's one of the, the things we really enjoy here is recognizing all the student accomplishments, both on the field and off, and, and well done. Look forward to seeing you back next fall or summer, whenever. If you want to stay for the whole meeting, you're more than welcome, but if you also want to hang out and head off, you're more than welcome to do that as well. Thank you for coming, and parents, thank you for letting your kids race with Portsmouth. Yeah, yeah. Is there, is there any public comment? Seeing none, on none virtually. Thank you very much. I don't have to read the public comment remarks. Moving on to Dr. Viveras's first superintendent's update.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Copeland. Great, so I'm going to go ahead and start this evening with our personnel update, and I've got quite the list, so just quite the list of new hires, and we have a few resignations. So we are welcoming to Portsmouth new hires Christine Brown, district school psychologist, Taylor Costa, district speech pathologist, Thomas Epstein, high school special educator, Danielle Fitzpatrick, high school math teacher, Talia Gasparo, high school special educator, Sean Horgan, high school coordinator of student life, Sarah Murray, high school English teacher, Amanda Parks, high school math teacher, Casmero Raposa, high school Spanish teacher, Sue Sullivan, high school special educator, Pedro Perez, high school custodial A, Jennifer Thomas, high school point four department chair for K-12 librarians and point six library teacher at the high school, Mary Beth Keen, middle school coordinator, student services, Jenny McManus, middle school math teacher, grade seven, Casey Mata, middle school special educator, Lauren Conley, Hathaway kindergarten, Allison Drouw, Hathaway special educator, Jack Nagliere, Hathaway, grade three, Wendy Topa, Hathaway clerical C, Brenna Corellis, Melville library media, Vincent Lasala, Melville, grade two. The following is a list of summer resignations. Jasmine Palumbo, school psychologist at the middle school, Jaleja Johnson, Portuguese teacher, Mary Boishman, registered behavior technician, Lauren Howley, general school aide, Hunter Pascal, registered behavior technician, Elizabeth Reduka, pre-K teacher, Christine Sacco, general school aide, Andrea Smith, general school aide, Ashley Kanata, special educator, Stephanie Radeski, registered behavior technician, Lara Stanton, clerical C, Andrea Toth, general school aide, and Lindsay Principi, grade three teacher. That was quite a list. I also just wanted to share that all of our high school head coaching positions were filled in the spring. Our middle school boys' head soccer coach has resigned, and the girls' head soccer coach position remains open. Both of those positions are posted, and they can be found on School Spring. As for assistant coaches, a number of them have been cleared to start but did not make it onto the personnel updates for, for this meeting. I'll report on them the next meeting. And three assistant coaching positions remain open. And that's it for our personnel updates. All right, now to our district. Everybody already. All right. So for our district updates, I'm excited to present my first district update as superintendent. Tonight, I'll be sharing updates in a few key areas. I hope this serves as both an overview and an invitation for ongoing conversations. So we're going to go ahead and get started with Hathaway. Our friends, families, and faculty at Hathaway brought their oxalotals on all kinds of summer journeys, sharing photos through emails and social media. Similar at Melville, families and friends joined in their summer whale-watching activities, taking their whale figures along on adventures. These creative activities kept our community connected, no matter where summer took us. Thank you to everyone who joined in the fun, and we have a little description of what an oxalottle is, because as I created my updates, I was curious. So yeah, very interesting. All right. Also, this summer, we were thrilled to host STEM camps for our youngest learners. Incoming kindergarten students, as well as kindergartners moving into first grade, participated in engaging hands-on introductions to science, technology, engineering, and math, while also helping them build confidence and get comfortable in a school setting before the year begins. This opportunity was made possible through Rhode Island's Learn 365 grant, and we're very grateful for the support that allowed us to extend these learning opportunities into the summer. And I think our, I also thank our town officials because they supported us throughout the process, too. This summer, we also partnered with Mathnesium, also grant-funded through Learn 365. Mathnesium provided targeted math instruction for 125 of our students. The program helped strengthen foundational skills while building confidence and enjoyment in math. The feedback that I've gotten from families and students has been incredible, so we deeply appreciate and value the partnership with Mathnesium. Yeah, I've had several families contact me via email and just conversations in some parking lots that they had a really positive experience with that. All right, now we're going to look at our high school. At our high school, our Bioscience and Business CTE spaces got a major makeover over the summer. We updated layouts, added new furniture, and installed cutting-edge resources, including state-of-the-art bioscience lab benches, that we have a photo thereof. These upgrades set the stage for some exciting developments in our CTE programs in the year ahead. This work was supported through the DODIA grant funding that we receive. Our Portsmouth Ag Innovation students had an amazing experience this summer. Ten high school students and three families traveled to Ireland, exploring the country's history, culture, and sustainable farming practices. Although this was not a district-sponsored event, the experiences will certainly benefit the farm. Back here at home, our summer Ag Innovation camp was buzzing with hands-on learning. Students cared for and harvested crops, raised chicks and ducks, built new gates and fences, and enjoyed some fishing. Additionally, high school fall sports are officially underway, and PMS Fall Sports will begin the first week of school. Recently, at our district, leadership team came together, and we had a very powerful retreat. We focused on our district priorities, and we reflected deeply on what's working well, what needs to change, and what new strategies or ideas we can add to our current school practices. It was a meaningful opportunity to align our efforts and strengthen our collective impact across the district, and a really great time for us to connect as a new leadership team, especially under my supervision. We also engaged our teachers, leaders, in the same activity during our summer workshop. They reflected on what's working well in their classrooms, what practices we should consider retiring, and new ideas we can add to strengthen teaching and learning across the district. It was an energizing session and really helped build a shared understanding of our district priorities and really building on that momentum so that we can start the school year on a positive note. Right, now for our construction updates. Construction has been a lot this summer. So at Portsmouth High School, the roof replacement is going smoothly, and the exterior work is about 95% complete. This will not affect the start of school. The majority of the exterior work being complete. Now, we've started to replace damaged ceiling tiles and repairing drywall in the interior. If those of you who had entered the auditorium in the spring, you would have seen that there was a great deal of damage, and we were very fortunate to be able to go ahead and have our staff orientation in the auditor, in the auditorium, and it was, it was great. They worked really hard on that. So the work is going to continue throughout the upcoming weeks after school hours until everything is done, but it will not in any way affect the operations of, of school. At Hathaway, the onsite wastewater treatment system project is complete. The playground addition is finished and ready for students to enjoy when they come back to school, and I just want to give a shout out to our HPTA for this amazing contribution to our Hathaway community. Now for our bathroom renovations, very big project this summer. Bathroom renovations at the middle school are progressing well. We did a walkthrough just before our meeting this evening, and I'm pleased with the work that's been complete. The fifth and sixth grade bathrooms, which were closed in the spring so that we could get the project started, are on schedule to be open tomorrow. If by chance anything were to happen overnight, we have a very good contingency plan in place so we can open school, but I am feeling very hopeful that those bathrooms, those A bathrooms that were closed in the spring will be open for tomorrow. The seventh and eighth grade bathrooms will need a few extra days to be finished, but this will also not affect the start of school. The middle school will pivot to the plan that they had in place in the spring, when our fifth and sixth grade bathrooms were closed to begin the construction project. We have been given a September 5th date as the projected opening of those bathrooms, so just a few more days. With us this evening, we have Phil Conti from Studio Jade and George Simmons, our facilities director, to support in answering any additional questions that you may have. I'm not sure if you'd like to pause now or continue. Perfect. All right. So after several months of updating our cell phone policy last year, we will begin full implementation this year of that policy. Students will not be able to use cell phones during class time. Uniform cell phone holders have been purchased for every classroom to support this change. This is an important first step as we review, and once again, we'll need to update our district's policy to align with General Law Section 162143, which takes effect on August 1st, 2026. The law requires that all public schools prohibit physical access to personal electronic devices during the school day. We will continue having discussions around this general law and make any necessary changes to our current policy through our policy Subcommittee meetings. The first day of the 25-26 school year is tomorrow, August 27th, grades K-5 and 9, and new students will have the opportunity to experience our schools. Thursday, August 28th, we will welcome all of our students, grades K through 12, back to the district. A reminder that there is no school Friday, August 29th, and there is no school September 1st for the observance of Labor Day. So that concludes my district updates.
I'm just surprised you didn't mention the latest school rankings from US News.
Don't worry, we're going to have a special presentation for that.
Tonight?
Yeah, no, not tonight, but I'll add that to our dis, I'll add it to our district update of all of our data, but yes, you're right, rankings came out, and...
We're 848.
848, yeah.
The country out of roughly 24,000. We're in the top three and a half percent.
Top three and a half percent.
Most importantly, we're closing in on East Greenwich.
We are. That's our goal, right? Excellent.
Thank you. Other questions? Let's, can we just go back to cell phone policy for one second? Just a reminder that this is the big change at the high school. At the elementary and the middle schools, cell phones are not allowed in general and have to just be in the backpack. I don't think the classrooms will have any holders there, right?
We will just continue to follow the policy.
Right, so, so Dr. Heath has noted that all classrooms, he has personally guaranteed they're all there. So that's the big change at the high school that gives us a year so that hopefully Portsmouth, you know, will figure out what works for Portsmouth and will be able to implement a policy that works for us. So I would just like to give a shout out to the policy Subcommittee, the high school, and all the parents who've contributed to that, so it, but I'm, I'm really pleased to see we're starting strong with this first day of school, so. Was there anything else? No, I think that was, okay, great, thank you.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, you asked about questions on the roof or bath?
Were there any questions?
That was part of the building committee focus was the bathrooms and then the roof, so did anybody have any questions on that?
Do you feel that they have any significant damage to their apartment seats or any?
Actually, there, there was some damage to the seats that was not because of the roof leak. It was actually damage from the restoration of the, the ceiling tiles and just managing of the equipment. So that's being taken care of.
But, and our insurance will cover that?
Yes, well, the contractors who are in doing the work will be covering it.
All right, well, good luck. Lots going on over Labor Day weekend. We just hope it'll all get done, right? Mr. Simmons will probably, are you working Labor Day weekend?
I have Mr. Simmons on speed dial, and I may or may not be texting very late.
All right, well, we're continuing with you, Dr. Viveras, you're doing our presentation tonight, transition to a new superintendent.
All right. Excellent, thank you, Dr. Copeland. As we begin this new school year, we also begin a new chapter in leadership in Portsmouth. So tonight's presentation, I will outline my recent transition to superintendent. I'm going to highlight some key actions that I have taken already, some structural changes, and the vision guiding our work moving forward. Right, so although my official first day was August 12th, the superintendency transition began quickly after my appointment on July 17th. And as I started to put this one slide together, I had presented to the school committee a 30-60-90 plan, and I would say I believe I got all 90 days into 14, so it's been, it's been a very busy few weeks for us. So just from the start, my focus has been on ensuring a smooth transition and building strong connections across our district. One of my first steps was sending a message to the school community and establishing a regular communication cycle to keep everyone informed and engaged. I added, actually added to that communications cycle, families this afternoon should have received my first superintendent's memo, and I'll be sending a memo at the end of every month, just updating our families and just providing some tips in areas as well. So I, after doing that, I quickly turned to our summer projects, so reviewing projects like the high school roof that we just reviewed and the bathrooms, as well as staffing, federal grants, the budget, summer programs, Council 94 negotiations, and curriculum work. I was also welcomed to the, by the town council. I met one-on-one with Town Administrator Mr. Rayner and had a great conversation with Jim McGaw from Portsmouth Times. We also began planning for stages one and two of our five-year capital plan to ensure we keep to the very tight deadlines that RIDE has established. I hosted a community meet and greet last Friday, which was a great time to reconnect with familiar faces and meet some new families. We had about 25 families that attended, so it was great to connect with them. I facilitated our administrative retreat, led a teacher leadership workshop just this morning, welcomed... just this morning, welcomed all of our staff back for opening day, which was so motivating and just, I feel, words can't describe how I felt this morning. And I think that it's just such an important part of our year to recognize our staff and, and their hard work and just come together and just be re-energized. And I truly feel that that happens. Yeah, and finally, to ensure that we are positioned for a success, I've implemented a provisional reallocation of the deputy superintendent responsibilities. So being that my transition into the role of superintendent has happened so close to the start of the school year, one of the first changes that I've implemented is a provisional reallocation of the responsibilities of the deputy superintendent. This model builds internal capacity, utilizes existing expertise and maintains our operational continuity. This stipend reallocation reflects a collaborative leadership model. I've assigned key responsibilities to experienced and capable staff members who are ready to take on these additional tasks. These individuals will take ownership in areas aligned with their strengths. It's a model built on trust, clarity and a shared leadership. It ensures that every deputy superintendent task stays on track and that every student and staff member is supported without missing a beat. Dr. Jeff Heath will step into the role of superintendent if for any reason I am out of district and will attend state meetings in place of the deputy superintendent. Dr. Jade Masterson will be overseeing truancy and support me with school safety and security. Ms. Charity Shea will be taking over federal grants. Ms. Jody Nevs and Ms. Danielle Laurie will be overseeing curriculum. Ms. Lisa Little will be coordinating MLL services and student teaching placements. Ms. Paige Corwin-Cleare will be taking over as the lead of our DODIA grants. Ms. Kim Maguire will become our homeless liaison and oversee district professional development approvals and educator evaluations. And finally, Ms. Heather Kupchandani will assist with overseeing student registration.
Miss Mr. Rose in there.
And, and Mr. Rose, yes, oh, did I miss that? I apologize. Yep, Mr. Rose will be overseeing all of our district-wide assessment, which will be quite the task that we will collaborate on together. Thank you for that. So this plan isn't static. I'll evaluate its effectiveness regularly and adjust as needed, which could include looking at adding to some additional support mid-year. An example of that could be reaching out to newly retired central office administrators and just see if they could support us a few days a week. But I will update you in a few months to let you know if we need to move on with that. Right. So this final slide highlights our updated organizational structure. And it's one that reflects my commitment to clarity, collaboration in building capacity across the district. So rather than the traditional top-down chart that we're accustomed to seeing, this model represents a more distributive approach to leadership. At the center is the superintendent's office where I'll serve as the lead point of coordination, strategy and accountability. Surrounding this central role will be four key branches, our school committee, district leaders, school leaders and additional district management, each essential for driving our shared mission forward. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
I'm already tired.
I'm pretty tired as well. But we made it. We're here today.
Yep, yep, no, and, and I mean, normally the deputy, like if hiring for a deputy superintendent wouldn't happen until spring because people have already committed. So I really applaud your, your kind of thinking outside the box and, and
I really, I couldn't not do it. I could not do it with the support, without the support of my district leadership team. They are just absolutely incredible. I couldn't ask for people, better people to be standing by my side each and every day. So thank you to all of you.
Yep, good luck. Other questions? They do, you do. I'm sure you do. All right, well, I think that's good to get that out there and then people know where different responsibilities lie and all that.
Sending a message out.
We realize Ms. Rose is holding it all together anyway, right?
And I will be sending out a message to the district.
Kupchandani, my, my apologies. I have to get, get used to the new last name.
I had to like spell it out phonetically.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I move of approval of school committee minutes, please?
I move for the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of July 1st, the executive session meeting minutes of July 1st, and additionally, the regular minutes of July 17th and the executive session minutes of July 17th.
Second, any changes, additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Five zero consent agenda.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero business A.
I move for discussion and action on the contract award for educational facility planning and architect slash engineering services for school construction applications, stages one and two.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Doctor, Mr. Duro.
I'll take it.
Doctor Master.
Honorary. On July 17th, the school committee made a tentative contract award for educational facility planning and architectural and engineering services for necessity of school construction application, stage one and stage two to Studio Jade, subject to a successful fee negotiation. Subsequently, the district has reached an agreement with Studio Jade regarding the cost for stage one and stage two services. Therefore, I'm requesting that the school committee make a final contract award for stage one and stage two educational facility planning and architectural engineering services for necessity of school construction application to Studio Jade in the amount of $229,000. This fee covers the time period between June 2025 and ending with a stage two submission to RIDE in February 2026 and is within the budgeted amount encumbered on the school department capital projects fund. Once the size and scope of the new five-year capital plan is known, we will renegotiate an additional fee for stages three and four and request further approval at that time.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion and second on the floor. Any questions for Mr. Duro? No, all right, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous five zero. Thank you.
I move for discussion and action on the approval to submit the necessity of the school construction, stage one application for stage one.
Second. All right, I believe we have a presentation here?
Yep, yep, thank you, Dr. Copeland. With us this evening, we have Phil Conti from Studio Jade and Sam Bradner from Peregrine. And Phil will be reviewing the process for submitting the stage one application.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. A very brief agenda. But I think it's important for those that may be going through the process for the first time to make sure I address any questions you have, but I certainly want to introduce the team. We'll review the process for stage one and stage two, tell you what we have completed to date, our approach to community engagement and feedback, and then of course, next steps and happy to answer any questions you may have. Next slide. So the team includes the owner, project manager, the Peregrine Group. They have been working with us, the design team, on the last capital project, which has gone on for a number of years. And it also includes a new team member for the stage one and stage two process, Manuel Cordero, who used to be with the RIDE School Building Authority. He is an educational planner. He will supplement our team as we go through the engagement process and look at the programmatic needs of the district. Next slide. So a review of the RIDE process, stage one and stage two, begins with a letter of intent that has already been completed and accepted by RIDE. So we are moving into stage one. And stage one is the, the entry point for establishing eligibility for state reimbursement. This is where we establish the district's need, whether they are just infrastructure related to the building or programmatic related to the building. Can the building support the curriculum, et cetera? We will then proceed into stage two where we identify the specific projects, the cost, the schedule of the solutions that satisfy the needs in stage one. The, the result of the stage two is the memorandum of agreement with RIDE, which is what establishes the reimbursement for these projects. The tasks that we've completed to date there begins with the facility condition assessment, both from a building standpoint and a programmatic standpoint. And I want to tell the district how much I appreciate their participation from George and the superintendent and, and others who joined a number of walkthroughs. The first being an educational adequacy walkthrough with Manuel, our educational planner, that was on August 7th. And then on August 7th, there was also some mechanical, electrical plumbing walkthrough by my team members. And again, August 13th, architectural and structural walkthroughs of the building. So those were conducted. We are aggregating the data now so that we can put it in our stage one for the needs. Next is about ten items that are just required for us to complete the stage one. Some of them are completed, some of them are ongoing. One of them is, for example, establishing the credentials of Mr. Simmons, making sure that's established. Making sure that Portsmouth has submitted their capital improvement plan. The facilities and programmatic analysis, that's what's ongoing. The demographics is also ongoing. We did solicit a demographer to do a forecast for Portsmouth. We do have the NESDEC information, which we will submit, but we want to do, go a little bit more beyond that so that you all have a good picture for the next five to 10 years of what that enrollment could look like. Another item for cross-districting due diligence. Next slide. Establishing what some of the planning activities are, and I'm going to talk about that in next steps. And then the last four are just checking a box, making sure that Mr. Duro has been able to fund the study, approving the study, which you just did in a previous motion, and making sure that we identify any incentives with the utility group moving forward in part of the stage one. Next slide. So our approach to community engagement really wants to include celebrating the completed work that you've done over the last several years, which has been, you know, twenty-five million dollars worth of capital improvements. The last being the bathroom project that is finishing this week. So we have decided to develop a series of presentation boards that the superintendent will take in a sort of traveling show at back-to-school events where folks at the elementary, middle and high school can see the work that has been done and also announce and develop the message for what's going to happen next as we move into the new stage one and stage two. The message being that we want to continue the school improvement. The part of those boards is going to include a survey for the community to be able to engage, sort of a call to action, so we can get some of their initial feedback when the superintendent has their attention at the back-to-school events. During the stage two process, that's where we'll have a little bit more engagement with the community. We did this same type of work several years ago when we were doing the last stage two. And that work will happen immediately after the submission in the middle of September, probably through November. That way we can finish our work for a submission of the stage two, which is in February of 2026. Next slide. So the next steps, the stage one submission included a school building committee recommendation that we had on August 20th. We're here tonight discussing with the school committee on the 26th. The superintendent and Mr. Duro are going to present it to town council on September 8th. And we will be submitting the application via the RIDE portal on September 15th. There is a link to the draft submission files. A number of the things that are completed are completed in this link. Some, we continue to update them usually every Wednesday. So if you want to just peruse and see what that submission looks like, you could hit this Google Drive between now and September 15th. After that submission, we would enter into the stage two. And the stage two process is an analysis of the district needs. It's where we will develop the prioritization of the projects and put a little bit more meat on the bones. The idea being that we want to be mindful to do no harm when we are planning these projects. For example, your district needs may be greater than what you're going to be moving forward with in the next stage two. So we just want to be mindful of that. We don't want to do something that would have to be undone five, 10 years from now. It also is going to require robust discussion between the school committee, the leadership and town council so that we know the available funding that they will support moving forward, right? We want to be, we want to know what lane we're in. Are we in a $10 million lane? Are we in a $30 million lane? Are we in something higher? You all need to settle around that pretty soon and pretty quickly so that we can put the best projects forward. And that's what we call responsible innovation, right? We want to be innovative, but we need to do it responsibly. And I could tell you, I have worked with a lot of municipalities and, and Portsmouth does a very good job of innovating responsibly. We did that last time and I expect we'll do it again. We are going to be presenting some high-level strategies to the school building committee around October, just to start that discussion. And the last is just any open discussion we want to have regarding any of these topics.
You said school building committee. Do you mean our, our district building committee or, or our school committee capital committee for the school building committee? Which one are we talking about?
The school building committee.
We don't, we have a district, okay, sorry.
Okay. So I'm happy to answer any questions for, for anybody.
It's a lot. And I think for anybody watching in the public, I think you have to know that all of these steps are not things we're just saying we should do. These are required by RIDE. They have a very detailed, complex process out there in order to get reimbursement, right? So right now Portsmouth reimbursement level is thirty-five percent, pretty much. That's the base. And so if we don't have projects identified and approved in our capital plan, they're not eligible for reimbursement, right? So the, the whole purpose of this exercise is to get what we would like to do over the next five years on that approved capital plan. There may be projects on there that we don't do, but in case we wanted to do them, we need to have them on the list. But we also, as Mr. Conti was saying, can't go huge because RIDE requires us to do forty percent of them, fifty percent of them. So whatever we put on this list, we have to be able to say, we're going to do fifty percent at least, right? So it's a very tight timeline. So the good news is the stage one, you know, the district, we've, we can do a lot of that in terms of data gathering. But I really think the important thing for the community is going to be what are our priorities for stage two? You know. When do you need the, the capital subcommittee? I mean, right now the district building committee is involved in this, but I also think it's important to really link in the, the capital subcommittee too, Dr. Viveras.
Sure, so I think that once we go to the town council and then we submit, I think soon after that, we should bring the capital subcommittee together.
That would be early October.
I would say early October. Heather and I are actually working on getting some dates for our first meetings.
So the, the community engagement part really doesn't start until October. So right now it's really just paperwork, data gathering, facility assessment.
And throughout the month of September, Dr. Copeland, I'll be at all of the open houses. We'll have those boards and I'll have some information for families. And we'll also have a link to the survey so that we can get things started.
And we'll have those boards at our next school committee meeting. And we'll have those boards at our next school committee meeting too on September 9th. They'll be here for display as well. When's the first open house?
The.
September 11th.
Is it the 11th? Yep, Hathaway.
At 9/11 Hathaway.
Yep.
Where the results of the, the results of the facility condition assessment that was conducted on the 7th, when is that? That's going to be October, we're going to hear that?
No, that will be part of our September 15 submission.
September 15th, okay.
That documents on, on the Google Drive if, if.
Yeah.
Mr. Fox wanted to look at that.
Correct. It, it may, that one may be one that's not there yet, but it will be there before September 15th.
I'm just curious, you said we're a responsible community? What do you say to an irresponsible community?
Oh, I don't say anything. I actually try to say very little. I just listen.
Okay, so could we go back to the timeline again, just where, where we are right now? So we're at the end of August. Here we go. So really, the next thing, we got to change that to district building committee, or that's going to mess me up. School bidding committee, oh, that was our last district building committee meeting, so town council, and then we really will see, will we need to approve the application before you submit it at the September 9th meeting?
No.
We don't have to vote on anything?
Correct.
Well, the town council doesn't have to vote, but does the school committee have to vote? No, it's just really pro forma. Stage one is kind of, here are the documents.
Want to put your mic on? Your mic.
Yeah, the letter of intent, that kind of covered all that. I think like for tonight, what we're looking for is just a vote in support. RIDE always likes to see that the school committee and the town councils are supporting, but I think we don't need an actual vote to submit until stage two.
I'm just a little confused because the item is discuss action approval to submit. So you want, we do need to vote that we approve our submission of the stage one.
Do not need to vote, we're asking you to vote.
Oh, okay, RIDE does not require it, it's just.
We're looking for support.
Oh, we support it, we do.
Yeah.
I say, I do. Okay, other questions? Comments? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous five zero in supporting the necessity of school construction stage one application for stage one. Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming, and you have a lot of work over the next few months.
And I, I will say, I truly appreciate both, both Phil and Sam and the, the entire team as well, because this is my first, you know, time going through this, and there is a lot of work ahead of us, and it was one of those things, someone had asked me, you know, what, what keeps you up at night in this new role? And this was one of those things, just because I, you just don't know what you don't know. So I really appreciate everything I've learned and the continued collaboration with everyone on my team for that, so thanks.
Yeah, and, and honestly, the community may be wondering, why are we doing this so quickly? I think that's a valid question, and Mr. Duro explained it to me very succinctly, that RIDE only accepts applications like twice a year, and if we don't get this deadline, then we're pushed back till spring, and then you don't start, you know, construct. So basically, it's not like we could just wait a month or two. It's, it's either now or you're looking at pushing it way down the, way down the road. So we, we appreciate you diving into this like on your day one.
And there's really great momentum right now, especially seeing all of the projects that are being completed, and just for us to continue to just look forward for where we want Portsmouth, so it's exciting, it's an exciting time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, business C, please.
I move for discussion and action on the Council 94 slash local 2669 contract.
Second.
Um, Dr. Viveras.
Yes, thank you. So this summer, we opened negotiations with Council 94 on Monday, July 14th, concluded the process by bringing the agreement to the membership for a vote on August 18th. From start to finish, the conversations were collaborative, professional, and reasonable. We are proud of the respectful and productive way these negotiations took place and grateful to the Council 94 members for the important roles they played and support, that they play each and every day in supporting our students, staff, and school community. So this evening, I'm asking the committee to vote on the approval of the new Council 94 three-year contract.
Thank you. Turn my mic off. We, we did discuss the contract in executive session, so we may not have any more questions here. All in favor? Any approve, any opposed? Unanimous five zero. So thank you, Council 94, thank you administrative team. It's, it's really great to have this wrapped up for the start of the school year. I know Mr. Duro did the economic impact statement, that's up in backup for everybody, and looking forward to a good, good three years with this contract. Thank you, Dr. Viveras.
Thank you.
I move for discussion and action on budget transfers over $5,000.
Second.
Mr. Duro?
Yep, so there were only two, these relate to fiscal year 2025, and as I'm closing out the year, there's just a little bit of housekeeping here, so again, looking for approval of these final two transfers over 5,000.
Fine for me, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous five zero, thank you. Reports, can you report out, please, budget transfer under 5,000?
Yep, just the same thing, again, as we're closing out the year, there were a few additional two, two small transfers, looking just to, again, no vote needed, but just to make you aware of it, and my intention is that your, at our next meeting, I'll have a draft, un-audited version of the full year, and I'll, I'll disclose that at that time.
Great, thank you. Just to clarify, it says on the agenda, discussion action, that's my error, this is not a action item, it's just a report out, so my apologies for that. All right, upcoming meetings, we have September 9th, school committee meeting, that will be here, and we will hopefully be welcoming our, our new members, new employees. Thank you all for coming, and may I please have a motion for a German?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous five zero. Have a good evening, everybody.